Call the meeting to order. First order of business is to read our script regarding remotely conducted open meetings.
So as a preliminary matter, this is Dr. Burnham, Superintendent of Schools. I will do a roll call to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Vice Chairperson Bertrand?
Yes.
Secretary Lehten?
Yes.
Mrs. Archambeau?
Yes.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
And Ms. Kelly?
Yes.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Recording secretary, Ms. Sue Summers?
Yes.
Business manager, Mr. Michael Cassidy. Mike, you need to unmute and say yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'll turn it back over to you, Mrs. Bertrand.
Good evening. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and is being broadcast over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel and streaming on Facebook Live. And this meeting of the Lunenburg School Committee is being conducted remotely. The town of Lunenburg, in response to the COVID-19 coronavirus, is currently following the guidance from the Lunenburg Board of Health, Massachusetts Department of Public Health, and the CDC regarding the virus and steps communities can take to prevent the spread. And all town facilities are currently closed to the public. In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GLC 30A 20, all public meetings are being conducted remotely. The order, which you can find posted on the town website on the COVID-19 Information Center page, accessed through the town manager's webpage, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Lunenburg School Committee is convening by telephone conference, video conference via Zoom app, as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating via video conference. Accordingly, be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. We are now turning to the first item on our agenda, but before we do, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minute. The chair will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate meeting minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. And for any items with public comment, after members have spoken or had the chance to speak, the chair will afford public comment as follows. The chair will first ask any members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. The chair will call on them by name and they will be afforded up to three minutes for any comments. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. So, without further ado, I actually would like us, if someone could make a motion to, or I don't know if I can, Kate, to take the items on this agenda out of order. First thing we probably should do is reorganize our committee so that we can move forward with the appropriate person, with a chairperson, to conduct the meeting. So we would need someone to make a motion for item number eight on the agenda to be taken out of order and done at the top of this meeting right now. Can anyone make a motion?
Yes, yes, I will make a motion. This is Carol Archambeau, and I'm happy to make a motion to take item number eight, first committee reorganization.
This is Brian Lehten, and I second.
All in favor?
Roll call vote. Mr. Lehten?
Yes.
Mrs. Bertrand?
Yes.
Mrs. Archambeau?
Yes.
Ms. Shapiro? And Mrs. Kelly?
Yes. All right, then, we will move on at this point to look at reorganizing our committee. We need to first look at the committee itself and we will need a chairperson, a vice chairperson, a secretary, and two members. So at the moment, does anyone?
I can take from here.
That's right.
Nominations for the chair, and then once that's determined, I'll turn it back over to the chair. So at this time, I'll take any motions for nominees for the position of school committee chair. Mr. Lehten?
This is Mr. Lehten, and I nominate Wendy Bertrand for chair.
This is Carol. This is Carol Archambeau, I would second that.
Any discussion? All right, we'll do a roll call vote. Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mrs. Archambeau?
Yes.
Mr. Lehten?
Yeah.
And Mrs. Bertrand?
Yes.
Congratulations. I'll turn it back over to you, chairwoman.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. So now, I will take any motions for vice chairperson of the committee. So just in knowing, this is someone who, as vice chair, acting in place of the chair, whether it be in a meeting or otherwise, if the chairperson is not able to be present. Any motions? I will go ahead and nominate Carol Archambeau for vice chair.
Brian Lehten, I second.
Any other nominees?
Yes.
And we can do a roll call vote. Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mr. Lehten?
Yeah.
Mrs. Archambeau?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bertrand?
Yes. All right, next we look at secretary. So that has a notekeeping component to that job if our recording secretary is not with us in that particular setting. So that would, does that cover it, Dr. Burnham?
And additionally, in workshop meetings potentially or executive sessions?
Yes, and typically it is just us as a committee. So definitely notes would need to be taken there and submitted. Or held on to, so I will entertain any motions for secretary. Brian, did you want to hang on to that?
I'd prefer not to. I think it's a good experience for everybody to try at least once.
You know what, back in the good old days, it was a new committee member's job when they came on. Typically, a new member of the committee took that, so if anyone. Brian, would you be willing to train and show me the ropes a little bit?
Definitely.
Out of water here, I'm not going to lie, but.
That's fine.
Yeah, this is Brian Lehten, Lori Kelly, Laura Kelly.
This is Carol. I'll second it.
Any discussion? Roll call vote. Ms. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mrs. Archambeau?
Yes.
Mrs. Bertrand?
Yes.
And Mr. Lehten?
Yeah.
Excellent. Then we have Mr. Lehten and Ms. Shapiro as committee members. We are a newly reorganized committee. So now we actually, there are a few motions that we need to put forward now that we're a new committee. So motion one would be to vote all committee assignments, and we're actually about to talk about subcommittees and assigning those. This motion is to vote on those all at once. So instead of let's vote on who's FinCom, take the whole vote, it will be put forward a name, go through, and then take them all committee assignment as one slate. So if anyone wants to make a motion to vote all committee assignments as a slate. Brian?
This is Brian Lehten, and I'll make a motion to appoint all committee assignments on one slate.
Do I have a second?
It's Carol Archambeau, I will second.
Any discussion? Is everyone clear? Because we're going to go through those subcommittees and vote on them? Any questions? All right, then.
Let's take a roll call vote to make sure everybody's in agreement, and then we'll take another vote at the end to appoint.
Okay.
Ms. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Shapiro? Mrs. Archambeau?
Yes.
Mrs. Bertrand?
Yes.
Mr. Lehten?
Yeah.
All right, our second motion is to authorize all existing policies and procedures to remain in force for the ensuing year ahead. So we just, we need a motion. Brian?
This is Brian Lehten, and I make a motion to authorize all existing policies and procedures to remain in force for the ensuing year ahead.
And a second? This is Laura Kelly, I second.
Roll call vote. Ms. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Lehten?
Yeah.
Ms. Shapiro? Can't hear Ms. Shapiro.
Yes.
Okay. Mrs. Archambeau?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bertrand?
Yes. Our third motion, to approve the annual student activity accounts authorization as follows. The primary school, $2,000 to their student activity account. Turkey Hill, $2,000. The middle school, $5,000. And the high school, $10,000. So if anyone has a question, feel free, otherwise we can put, someone can put forward a motion.
I did have a question, this is Brian Lehten, and I had a question if the amounts were the same as last year? Do we know if they're the same?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right.
I could follow up with the motion then. I'll make a motion to approve the annual student activity account authorization as follows. Primary school, $2,000, Turkey Hill, $2,000, middle school, $5,000, and high school, $10,000.
And a second?
I'm Sophie Shapiro, and I second that motion.
Any discussion? Ready for a roll call vote? Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mrs. Archambeau?
Yes.
Mr. Lehten?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bertrand?
Yes. And our fourth motion is to approve the annual town meeting auditorium waiver, allowing food and/or beverages with lids in the Lunenburg High School Auditorium for the annual town meeting. Brian?
This is Brian Lehten, and I'll make a motion to approve the annual town meeting auditorium waiver, allowing food and/or beverages with lids in the Lunenburg High School Auditorium for the annual town meeting.
Excellent, and a second?
It's Carol Archambeau, I will second.
Any discussions?
This is just, it's typical. We, this is something we carry year to year.
We ready for a roll call vote? Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mrs. Archambeau?
Yes.
Mr. Lehten?
Yeah.
And Mrs. Bertrand?
Yes. So now that we've gone through those, we can look at appointments to existing subcommittees, and this is where we will do them as a slate. So we'll vote everyone after, and we certainly can have discussion if any of our new members or existing members have questions about particular committees. Particularly, some of them have typical times they meet. Those are key things to know, so feel free as we go through to ask any questions. So the first one would be the official voting delegate to the Mass Association of School Committees. And that's typically, that is typically the chairperson. So, and I am fine with that.
Great.
The legislative representative for the school committee, which is also typically the chairperson.
Sounds good.
I'm fine with as well.
Yeah. That works.
The spokesperson is also the chairperson. And superintendent of schools, obviously Dr. Burnham. Our next subcommittee is Policy Development and Review. So those are reviewing different sections of district policies. Sometimes there will be things that come down from the state around recommended guidance around particular language. So sometimes last year, we looked at some particular policies, but sometimes it's just a whole section that we haven't reviewed. We kind of do them in a cycle order, what haven't we looked at and reviewed in a while, and going through and, you know, looking to see if any language needs to be updated, revamped, things like that. And there are two members for that. And those meeting times are flexible among the two members and the superintendent. And typically meet once every month or so. Dr. Burnham, we met a lot last year, but I don't think there's. We sure did. So it's, you know, that, I think there's flexibility unless Dr. Burnham knew that now that there were a lot of policies we needed to review.
I do have a slate ready with recommended language based on guidance from MASC.
Okay, and there's that. So, but just to know, those meetings, it's not like some meetings where you have to go to another meeting like Carol attended FinCom, and those are a standard time. These can be done at, you know, at the convenience of the members, so if anyone.
I'd be willing to do that, too.
And I thought that this was one somebody might want to fight over so that they could spend time reviewing policy. Any further discussion?
I don't know if we want to have someone who's been on the committee along with someone who, you know, who's newer, because it does sort of help sometimes in talking about when policies have been looked at in the past or things that have come up. So I don't, you know, just a thought out there.
I don't mind being on the committee, that would be fine.
I would say the same thing, if people want to do it. I know there's a lot of committees too, so.
There are.
There's plenty to do, there's no shortage.
Yeah, I think it would make sense to have one new member with a.
Absolutely. Because that's how we, that's how we have members, that's how we can continue, you know, with the committee as time goes on, as some leave the committee and some are still on, so.
Yeah, I'd be willing to do something else if you want, somebody else.
Trust me, we got a whole list, so.
Oh yeah, I'm ready.
Not to worry.
Not to worry.
Carol, do you have thoughts? Me or you? Any thoughts?
It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter, Brian. If you want to do it, that's fine. I can do it. Either way.
I'd like to. I thought about it, but two people jumped up quick, so I was a little hesitant, but I'd be interested.
Well, that's fine with me.
Thanks.
All right, so then we will.
So we're settled on Laura Kelly and Brian Lehten?
Yes.
Okay.
Our next committee is, we have to vote this, and this is not one we would step forward to, but these are administrators in advisory capacity. So, or they're not voted, these are the elected and appointed for the year. Do I need to read those, Kate?
We can go through the list quickly.
Sure. So elected and appointed for 2020, 2021 school year is Rob McGrath, Tim Santry, Heidi Champagne, Christina Gerton, Julia Hanscom, John Londa, Juliana Hanscom, John Londa, Michael Cassidy, Stephen Melandrinos, and James Spunnel. So same.
Just a question. Would we want to add Nadine Lorenzen as the Director of Food Services to this list?
Yeah, I would think so, because she's, I know she's part of the administrative team when you have spoken or given names in the past. Sure?
Yeah.
That's fine.
Should we have a motion for that, Kate?
I think since we're voting the slate at the end, as long as there isn't any opposition to adding Nadine's name here, we should be fine.
Okay. Sick Leave Bank. Can you speak to? That was you.
That was me in the past. I enjoyed my time with Michael, but I think it's a good learning experience, and I'm ready to move on if somebody else would like the experience.
Can you, can you talk a little bit about what you did?
So I met with Michael and usually a union representative. There's a part of the contract called the Sick Leave Bank, where there's a bank of days that if staff members need a sick day and they don't have any sick days, they can apply for the sick bank. And then myself, Michael, and usually a typical union representative would meet and we would discuss the case privately and then decide whether we would appoint as a group those sick days for that person. I don't know if Michael, are you going to expand on it anymore if I missed anything?
That's well said, and the big thing is just a private and confidential matter. We usually meet or we can meet before a school committee meeting. Other than that, it's exactly the way you explained it.
And the meetings were typically after school at some time, because obviously staff needed to be available for the meeting.
Right, so you're typically, yeah, so you're typically talking, those were afternoon meetings then?
Yes.
Okay. So we'd probably.
I can do it again if nobody else is interested, but I think it would be a good experience.
Only timing, that's, and that's one of the things, that was why I said before, to talk about typical times for meetings, because, you know, in order for people to commit, you know, knowing the full scope of the commitment is key.
These positions are held for like a full year, right? Okay.
Yeah.
Yes.
If neither Sophia or Laura want to do it, I don't mind doing it at all.
I don't mind either, I'm pretty flexible with timing, so.
Either way, yeah.
So do we think that this is a good opportunity for a new member?
I think so.
Okay, then.
And I think we can always go back to the list when we're done, and if somebody has a little too much more than they thought, we can always look at.
And we have done that in the past as well, before we've done the slate vote. So yes, definitely. All right. The superintendent of schools, Dr. Kate Burnham. Executive board member to the Keystone Collaborative is Dr. Kate Burnham. Finance committee representative.
I would just as soon keep that.
And I think that's a great idea. Here's the other. Here's the other part of this with finance committee. We also need, there were some open, there were two open slots on the finance committee, and they've had they've had applications. So they need a representative from the school committee who can be part of the appointment committee. So I don't know, that's certainly not a full year-long commitment, Carol, it would just be those meetings. I don't know if you're interested in doing that, since you're going to sit on the committee, or if you'd want to see if someone else was interested.
It makes sense to me for me to go and to see who wishes to be appointed. So I certainly wouldn't mind doing the appointing committee as well.
Okay. And I do know town manager has reached out, so they were looking to find out who that person was. It was former chairperson Soroka. So they were looking to see who would be that new person, because they will be looking to do those appointments after the Board of Selectmen meeting on July 7. So sometime after that.
That's fine.
Okay. Capital planning. I'm happy to step forward for that one. A lot of, that was something that chairperson Soroka had done. It's actually a committee I haven't been on yet on the school committee, so interested, particularly this year when we're going to look at capital expenditures, when we may have budgets that are a bit challenged.
That sounds good.
Does anybody okay with that?
Yep.
Wellness Advisory Committee. So this committee typically meets about every six weeks. They've been doing Tuesdays, I believe. Tuesdays or Wednesdays about 3:45 PM. So that's, and they meet at the middle high school. So I don't know if anyone. It's not super often, but again, that's a time of day one.
I'd be interested in doing that, because I can work my class schedule around that, so it should be fine.
Perfect. And it was, I don't know who will be in charge of that now, it was Carolyn Finch, but she's retired, so we'll see how that reorganizes, but. PTO liaison. So this is someone who can attend PTO meetings, which are monthly on Monday evenings at 7, or at least they have been. Just to be able to answer, or bring back to us what is going on within the PTO. Because all these committees, at the end of all of our meetings, we have check-ins. So that's where we, as the liaison, bring that information to the public and to the rest of the committee. Anyone is able to.
I can do that. I can do that.
Okay. And if anyone's inter, um, I can be an alternate for that. That way if, if somebody can't, you know, can't go, we, we've had in the past alternates with that.
That would be great.
That sounds good.
Paccel. Um, so is Paccel still? Dr. Burnham, do you know if they're still?
They, they typically hold their meetings um at eleven AM.
Yeah.
And I believe they're typically on a Friday.
Yeah.
If anyone.
I have the flexibility in my schedule to do that.
I don't think.
No one else would like to.
And they, they don't have meetings very frequently. I do know that, so.
Okay.
So now, um, School Committee Representative to the High School. So when the high school has its advisory meetings, which are typically about every four to six weeks, somewhere in that range, this would be a s- School Committee Member to bring back to us information and if there were any to provide any updates from things that are happening at after meetings. And that is, they typically are around three PM, two forty-five or three, I believe. So I don't know if anyone, because we have all four schools and all four of those do have after-school meetings. Again, not super frequently, but.
I can do high school if no one else wants it.
Okay. Yeah, I'm out for the after-school ones unfortunately.
Do we know what time the middle school meets?
I don't know. Jim, Jim had that last year. I don't. I don't know.
I would, I would think it's probably sometime around three.
Three-ish. Turkey Hill met a little bit later, right, Carol? They were like four fifty.
Yeah, they were like at four.
Four, yeah.
Um, I'm happy staying on Turkey Hill, but if it's better for someone else to have the four o'clock time, then I could cover the middle school and, you know, if the later time works better for somebody else. I, I.
That would help me. I always thought it's the primary school. Me and Laura both were on the primary school. I could try a different one. And then Laura could stay on the primary and if she's interested and I could take.
That's fine. I can do that and then switch it up next year and move to another school. I'm fine staying on primary for right now.
Well, so Brian, if you want to do the elementary where you can get out, you can make that meeting much easier.
Yeah, that would be great.
And then I can do the middle school.
Okay, so Carol Middle School, Brian Turkey Hill, and Laura Primary. Alright, Athletic Advisory Committee.
So I had that, I had that last year. I would like to continue it with the momentum that we've had and working with the members in the athletics. I think it's a good fit. I'd like to keep on with that. That's okay.
That would be great. Lifelong Learning Advisory. I had that last year. If someone, I'm, I can keep it if um we didn't, are, do you foresee more meetings coming up with that Superintendent Burnham?
If, if, if we're having meetings, it probably wouldn't be more than maybe one or two for the year.
What is that? Do you, like, what are the responsibilities of that committee?
That was evening. So Lifelong Learning Advisory, we looked at all of our evening programs, like they had the um adult, like the adult education type programs and looking at how we could potentially grow in Lunenburg over the years to have, you know, a more thriving, you know, adult ed type program that could potentially, you know, serve the community and be a potential revenue stream someday. I mean, that was the, the, the long-term vision on that with a brand-new building. So it was the year we did it, it was, we met more frequently, but in the last two years, we haven't, last year we had no meetings, so. I'm happy, I'm happy to stay on that, that's fine.
Okay.
And the TC Passius Building Design Committee.
You're muted, Brian.
Sorry, that was me. Um, but I feel like the process, we've been going through it, it's about kind of halfway there. I felt like to keep the continuing momentum, I'd like to stay on the committee and working with the people on that committee still.
Yeah. So that, that is all. I don't think I missed any, Dr. Burnham? I think.
You did not.
Alright, then I will, I will take a motion to approve all of these committees.
I'm motion to approve all of the committees.
And a second? Brian?
Brian Leighton, I second.
Okay, we ready for a roll call vote?
I think so.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bertrand?
Yes. Alright.
Alright.
Moving, moving on, um, our Chairs, um Chairs Report. I did want to just um take a moment here to welcome um Sophie Shapiro and Laura Kelly. Um, our two new School Committee Members. Um, we definitely, I, I think I speak um for, for Brian and for her and, you know, looking forward to working together, the five of us. We've got a big year with a lot of um, a lot of fluidity coming our way, so um it, it will be great to um, to work together, the five of us. And um I wanted to take a moment to review some protocol items here because when you come onto the School Committee, there's, you know, there's not, eventually there is a training you get to go to, but there's no manual that comes along with it. So just a couple of things. Um, we represent as a School Committee the students of Lunenburg and we have three main responsibilities. Um, policy, governance, and the hiring and oversight of the Superintendent. And our meetings are conduct, to conduct School Committee business and they're held in this public setting. Um, and as members, we're here to collaborate, discuss and deliberate, and vote on information that comes before us. Um, we touched on this earlier when we were voting. Um, as a School Committee, the Chairperson uh is the designated spokesperson for the committee. Um, therefore, members just need to take care when they're speaking in public, um, or a private setting, email, social media, um, be careful about commenting or giving answers regarding School Committee topics or any specific school-related issues. Um, we're five individuals on the committee, so one person speaking can be sometimes interpreted if someone gives an answer. Um, say a newspaper, anything, social media, um, as being reflective of the School Committee. Um, so I think it's typically why in public spaces, you don't see a lot of us as School Committee Members chiming in places. You know, when an answer is, is needed, either the Superintendent can, can be that spokesperson or the Chairperson can. Um, and Jim Levesque, who formerly sat on the School Committee, um, recently gave a really good reminder that um we are, we're a nonpartisan committee, so charged with representing our students. So um, politics don't, don't play a role in, in in the work we do together. And in our meetings, um, votes, you guys caught on really quick with voting. Um, so the Chairperson will ask for a motion and any one of the members, it's a little more challenging when we can't all see each other, you know, or you can see four little boxes on your Zoom screen. When we're in person, it's easier to see each other and see who, who might want to make a motion, but one person can make a motion. Someone needs to, a different person needs to second it, and then we do that roll call vote, which is typically answered in the affirmative. Um, and we do have the Mass Association of School Committees who does do a training for all new School Committee Members, which I, you know, you, um, Lauren and Sophie will get more info about, and Brian has done, I've done, Carol has done. Um, they do a great one-day training that's really helpful on, on everything, from the legal aspects of what we do, um, just down to the nitty-gritty, down, you know, signing all of the, um, signing all of our warrants, things like that. Um, and we have a liaison from the Mass Association of School Committees, and we've actually reached out to that person. They typically come in the summer and they do a workshop with us, and they just talk about the role of the School Committee, what we do, um, best ways of doing it, answering any specific nitty-gritty type questions we may have. Um, so that, that will be forthcoming for us as well. Um, hopefully maybe at one of our meetings in August, um, our representative, who has been Dorothy Presser in the past, um, I'm assuming it's still her, but um, I guess. So that, that was all I had for Chairs Report, just a little going over what we do, how we do it. Um, so next we can move on to meeting minutes. So we need to approve the minutes from the last meeting. Um, I don't know, um, actually, I'm sorry, public comment on agenda items first before we get to that. Does anyone have any public comment? We do have some public here outside of uh, outside of our committee, so um, this would be about items on, specifically on tonight's agenda. I'm looking to see, I'm looking. Not seeing.
I don't see anyone either.
You don't see anyone? Hands raised? Okay. If anyone on the committee had a specific comment. Alright, then now we can approve our minutes from the last meeting. So those of us that were at the last meeting, Carol, Brian, myself, we would, any issues with those?
No.
Alright, then I will take a motion to approve those minutes. Brian?
This is Brian Leighton. I'll make a motion to approve the regular session minutes of June seventeenth to uh two thousand twenty.
Second.
Carol Ashambo, I will second that.
Okay, um, just uh as a point of information for the two new members of the committee. Um, you may not feel comfortable approving these minutes because you were not at the meeting. You do have um options when you vote. You can vote yes, no, but you can also abstain. Okay.
Thank you.
So roll call vote.
Or.
We're ready for roll call?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes.
Ms. Shapiro?
I'm going to abstain from this one.
Mrs. Kelly?
Abstain.
Mrs. Bertrand?
Yes. Then we'll move on to our.
Before we move on, I just would like to mention that um the warrants have been shared electronically. Um, keep an eye on that. You'll probably get some reminders from Liz Peterson, who's the Secretary here at, at um the Superintendent's Office. Uh, they're looking to have those all signed so that they can go forward to the uh Board of Selectmen on their July seventh meeting.
Right.
Laura, I see. Can, yeah, I, I actually did review some of the warrants today. I noticed some of the dates on there. We were not committee members when some of the, does that still apply that we should sign them? Because I, I just didn't know how that works, to be honest with you.
You can.
Okay.
Because ultimately you're, we need, we need a minimum of three signatures to authorize your, your approval as a body before they can go forward.
Okay.
Um, so if you're not comfortable and there are already three signatures there, not, not including mine. Um, then you, you can pass on those.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. And no line item transfers, correct, Dr. Burnham?
Not this evening.
Okay.
I just had a question regarding the warrants. Do I, because I, I've kept up with them because like, I don't like forgetting. And um now I've signed them in a different place, so should, does it matter that I signed as a member, or do I have to move them?
I would suggest that you not give yourself all that added work by going back and moving your signature on all of the ones that are in that file. I think moving forward from, from today on, any new ones that are added.
Okay.
Sign, sign as the um, the Vice Chair. And Wendy, same for you. You would sign from today forward, anything added in as the Chair.
And Laura, you'll sign at the secretary spot.
Okay, okay. Great. So now Dr. Burnham has her Superintendent's Report.
Alright, so there's a, an update on the Washington DC trip. Merchant travel updated um the parents recently, indicating that all but the two hundred and fifty dollar non-refundable deposit has been fully refunded to families. Uh, she, uh Faith Merchant will continue to seek refunds from all of the vendors that she contracted with for this trip and uh will determine how much of the two hundred and fifty dollar non-refundable she can refund to the families, and she will keep folks updated. Ms. Santry surveyed the incoming eighth-grade families to gauge interest in planning a DC trip next spring. Uh, class size is about one twenty-nine. There were ninety-three respondents to the survey. Just a quick highlight on um uh the responses. Question, would you allow your child to participate in a multi-day out-of-state trip to Washington DC in May twenty twenty-one if CDC and DPH guidelines felt it was safe? The response was eighty-four point nine percent yes. Question two, planning an out-of-state trip requires months of planning and reservations in advance and requires a non-refundable deposit from parents. Are you comfortable making an initial deposit, knowing if health and travel guidelines change, you may lose your deposit? And fifty-four point eight percent responded yes. If you feel comfortable sending your child on the DC trip, we have used an in-town travel agency for over a decade for the personal experience they have been able to provide our students on the DC trip. Do you feel we should look into what other travel agencies have to offer? Sixty-five point six percent responded yes. There was um an additional question um that was an open response. And um it, the parents were invited to share any additional concerns that they may have. So Ms. Santry has some initial data. Uh, and I'm sure that, you know, when we resume school in the fall, um, there will be another follow-up conversation with the eighth-grade families.
Okay.
Chromebook collection. Our Chromebook collection went very well. This was a collection um so that we could retrieve all of the Chromebook um or iPads that were uh distributed during the closure. Uh, we held three, three-hour drop-off days, June sixteenth, seventeenth, and eighteenth, and another ninety-minute drop-off on June twenty-fourth. All but twenty-nine Chromebooks were returned. Um, and we, we issued about three hundred, so that, that's a pretty good number. Our IT and school administrators will continue to reach out to parents to arrange for Chromebook return. The reopening planning team, Department of Ed released initial guidance for fall, oh, the fall reopening. Uh, the district will have to develop and submit three plans to DESI in August. One plan for a return with the safety protocols in place. One plan for a hybrid return, half as many students on campus at any one time. So potentially a week on campus followed by a week remote and the cohort would switch places. And lastly, our full remote model. The social distancing uh guidance that came as part of this initial, initial guide, guidance from DESI uh now reduces. uh, now reduces the distance from six feet to three feet between students in classrooms. And all adults and students grades two through 12 and beyond, um, so this would apply to our ACE program as well, will be required to wear masks. Districts, as part of the planning, are also being asked to build mask breaks and frequent hand washing into the school day. We're expecting final guidance will be released mid-July. The reopen planning team met today. We had a keynote speaker kick off today's meeting to help us prepare for out, outside-the-box thinking. We also conducted a fears and hopes protocol with the group, asking everyone, uh, what is your greatest fear about next year and what is your greatest hope for next year? We concluded the meeting today with a brief overview of the recently released guidance and our next steps. Task groups were asked to schedule their first meeting before the end of next week and we will continue to keep you updated on progress. And lastly, facilities use. Uh, I sent out a communication last week to all families to provide some clarification on facilities use. This communication was drafted and signed by myself, Mr. Londa and Mr. Bunnell, our facilities director and our athletic director. Hopefully the explanation of the mass guidelines for facilities released from the governor's office and the MIAA regulations, uh, that body that governs, uh, student athletics. We're, we're hopeful that, um, the outline of, of those, uh, regulations will be helpful in understanding the role of the schools under these state restrictions. And that's all I have for superintendent's update.
Thank, uh, question, uh, regarding when you talked about a submission of three plans. At this point, does it still, is your impression that if our district can, can choose if among those three plans of submission, if the district?
That's not my sense of things at this time. Um, at this time, given the conditions that exist in the state in terms of the public health metrics, uh, that everybody's been watching. Um, the goal would be for all districts to return their students to the campus. Um, I think, you know, right now we're all going to have to work and, um, determine what that looks like. How do we get all of the students back with that three-foot minimum distance requirement? Um, we may have to, and, and this is guidance from the state too, we may have to repurpose other spaces in the school and create classrooms in those spaces. Uh, there's also going to be some flexibility around, um, using teachers. So as an example, um, you know, we, we have a Title I teacher at the primary school. Potentially the Title I teacher might have to be assigned to teach a classroom. Um, again, early into, um, trying to assess what we think we can provide in each building. All of the principals have been asked to walk their buildings and go into every classroom with their head custodian to determine what's the maximum number of students we can get in each classroom. Now, some classrooms, uh, particularly at the high school and the middle school, many of the, the classrooms are, are cookie cutter. You walk from one to the next and the layout of the classroom is exactly the same. So naturally, you know, if you figure out that you can fit 24 in classroom A and then you go to classroom B and it has exactly the same layout, you know that you can fit 24 in that class as well. But not all the classes in all of the schools are exactly the same. Um, I've advised them that we may have to remove furniture and other items from classrooms. As an example, at the primary school, oftentimes you'll see, um, bookcases. Um, at, at the, um, kindergarten level, you might see lots of, um, PlayStations occupying a lot of space in the classroom. We're gonna have to consider removing some of that, maybe relocating it somewhere else where the kids can go and have their center time and have that play experience in a larger setting, like maybe the cafeteria or the gym. Um, but again, all of this is, is kind of up in the air right now, but the goal is to figure out how many students we can get back on campus under these conditions. Really ultimately, I think with the goal of trying to get everybody back on campus and be able to implement these conditions. I, as I said, I think that that's the commissioner's goal at this point, that all districts will reopen with safety protocols in place in the fall. If conditions change, uh, if schools don't receive a, uh, PPE-type equipment or supplies in time to open safely, we may have to request from, from the department that we open remotely or, or even, you know, a hybrid, uh, depending, depending on the conditions. But the priority right now is to plan for a full return to the campus with safety protocols in place.
And did I see that? Sorry, Laura, I didn't see your hand up. I'll. You, you can, Laura.
Sure. Oh, I just wanted, um, Kate, just a question that I had. Has there been a discussion in the, um, reopening task force as to what to tell, um, the second grade parents regarding the fact that that grade, no, no discussion yet, just.
So, so at this point, um, the guidance was released and, uh, at this point, and, and things can shift between now and the, you know, the final guidance being released in a couple of weeks. But the, the guidance that was provided is based in an analysis of the research that's available and a recommendation from the American Academy of Pediatricians. Um, this was not just a bunch of educators sitting around a table at the Department of Education coming up with these, uh, recommendations. Um, so the, the guideline around, uh, mask wearing for grades two on up really is not going to be negotiable. Now, on a case-by-case situation, if a child has some, um, unique needs and a mask is really not, um, going to be helpful for that particular child, uh, on a case-by-case basis, we, we can review, um, but, 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 but we are supposed to look at the guidance as more of a mandate.
Yeah, okay, that's understood. I just didn't know if there'd be more of a concern, um, from parents that their grade is the only grade in that building who will be wearing masks. But if it's mandate, there's really not any room for negotiation. I just thought I'd ask.
Brian?
Thanks. Um, I just wanted to start off by thanking the superintendent and the admin team for the surveying the parents on the, the field trips. I thought that was really important to get that feedback. But talking about the Department of Ed guidance, um, and the plan for safety protocols in place. Um, I think a lot of people and a lot of, I saw it on social media too, that people think that the K, the kindergartners and the first graders aren't required to, or are not encouraged to wear masks. The, the guidance actually says they are encouraged to wear masks. So I think it's very important that our parents and our teachers and our staff are, are encouraging them to wear masks and that we're, all the data out there shows that states that everyone aren't wearing masks, they're getting higher infection rates. And that I worry for our staff and I worry for my kids too. I have, I have a child in, going into the first grade. I have a child going into pre-K and they know that if somebody else isn't wearing a mask, that that's a concern. They know that they need to wear masks and that everybody should be wearing masks. So I have, I have a big concern about that and I think it's really important that staff and, um, parents are going to be encouraging their children to wear masks because if everybody's in masks, it's gonna be a safer environment. Um, with that said too, I wonder if it's possible to do a survey to our kindergarten and first grade, um, parents. Um, also I, I, I see a high number of parents thinking about homeschooling too. Um, there's a concern there and if we go back to school and parents decide that they don't want to homeschool their child anymore, what's the options of coming back to school? Um, parents might need to know that information. Um, and then about students with medical issues too, I wonder if we can do research too on shields. So at least there's some protection, um, that if they're not wearing a mask, maybe they're wearing a shield just so again, we have a higher protection and the safety for our staff and our students.
So you raise all good points. Um, we actually have done, um, a review of our entire staff by name and assignment to the building and, uh, done an analysis of the kind of work they do and the type of students they're working with. And if the six, at that time, if, if the six-foot social distancing was going to be a challenge for the staff member to do that work with the students, we've already planned for shields for those staff, extra precautions for those staff. Um, remote learning is still going to be an option for parents that do not feel comfortable returning their child to the campus. You asked about a survey, so the plan is now that a model has been released to give some consideration to, um, and the guidance with the three feet and the mask wearing and whatnot, we're in a better position to now survey families to assess their comfort level with a return to the campus with those guidelines in place. What's their comfort level with a hybrid model? Let's say a week on, a week off. And what's their comfort level, um, you know, do they insist that they want to keep their, their children under remote learning? Um, we're gonna need that information. We're gonna need that data. I'm also gonna need data on how many parents um, intend to allow their children to ride the bus to school. Because having the number of students that will ride a bus will inform our bus route development and will be better prepared to anticipate any shifts that might be needed for the car drop-off. If, if we're gonna have a lot of parents dropping their children off and picking them up at the end of the day, we may have to consider in our planning a staggered drop-off, like, you know, either at Turkey Hill, those students with last names A to F arrive at X time and there's, you know, like a five-minute window that's dedicated just for their drop-off and so on and so forth. And the same thing with a staggered release. Again, these are all things that we need to think about and talk about. They may happen, they may not happen. Um, but I need some data, uh, you know, in order for us to plan with some degree of confidence in, um, what we're actually going to see in September. But there, there definitely will be a survey. I wanted the state to at least get some initial guidance out, give parents some time to give some consideration to what's been proposed. Unfortunately, you know, now we're right on, on top of the holiday weekend approaching. It's not the best time to do a survey, uh, so we will get down to a survey, um, following the, following, following the holidays so that I have some data for the task groups to look at as they start thinking about how this works. We also know that we're going to have staff who, um, have medical conditions that make them more vulnerable. And we're also going to have to take a look at how do we accommodate that? So it's possible that, you know, some of our staff will have to continue to work remotely. Now, whether or not I have exactly the right number of teachers to teach exactly the right number of remote classes, I, I don't think that's gonna happen. It might, um, but these are the logistics that we need to try to figure out. Uh, so there is going to be quite a lot of deep thinking um, and logistics in the development of, of these plans. But yeah, we'll be, we'll be surveying staff and, and families.
Thank you.
Dr. Burnham, one final question. Um, we're, guidance is coming regarding transportation and sports. At some point in July, we don't have any timeline, whether we're talking early, mid, or late.
Uh, we're hearing that, you know, uh, at the latest, we should see it included with the final guidance. Um, I know that, uh, the Department of Ed is waiting um, for the MIAA to, to make their decision. Um, they have an entire team, um, that's looking at this from a health lens. Um, and they will have some recommendations and, um, I, I feel pretty confident at this point that the Department of Ed is going to embrace and endorse those recommendations.
Just wanted to, to put that out there as I know that's something that, 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 you know, there have been other community questions about. So just wanted to make it clear that that's, that's not, that hasn't been, information has not been conveyed yet and is expected in the next several weeks.
So I think it might also be important just to let you know that before schools closed, teachers and, um, in some cases, the building principal, um, may have surveyed. The building principal may have surveyed or allowed teachers to individually survey the families in their classes around feedback from this spring. What worked, what didn't work so well, and what recommendations might they have, uh, for improvements for next year? So we do have that kind of feedback data that we can use from faculty members, from administrators, from students, grades three on up, and from families at all levels.
Good to know.
Yeah, I thought, I thought it might be more beneficial and perhaps we'd have a better, um, response rate if this survey, if you will, was conducted on a, a local level down at the building level rather than, you know, me pushing out a link to a survey district-wide. Um, I, I thought perhaps, you know, the parents might feel more, more comfortable providing that direct information, um, to the faculty and the administrators at their own building level. And we did get a good amount of feedback.
Right. Anybody have any other questions for Dr. Burnham regarding Carol?
Yeah, I just had a comment. I'd just like to, um, commend Dr. Burnham in organizing this reopening group well ahead of time before the guidance came out so that people were in place. And I'd like to thank the educators that are taking time from their summer to, um, try to help to regroup our, our school district for the reopening. It's an awful lot of work after they just finished an awful lot of work and before they're starting something completely new that will be an awful lot of work. So, um, I don't want them to think that it goes unnoticed, the amount of effort and time they have put in on this as well as your, is the administrative teams. So we thank them.
When I rolled this out to, um, to the faculties at, at each school, uh, I had a drop-in meeting for the faculty at each school the last week, um, school was in session and explained the work of the committee ahead of them this year and told them that, um, when we get down to the level of working in task groups, we may need more hands on deck. So if anybody was interested and was available and had any energy left to contribute to the work, um, I encouraged them to reach out to their, um, their building administrators or to me directly. And we did have several, in addition to the folks who are committed to being on the larger group, we had several staff members, uh, volunteer their time to, to work with the task groups. You know, but it just speaks, uh, to the level of commitment um, that the teachers have to making sure that whatever we do is safe and quality. And sustainable for everybody. That was one of the challenges that we experienced. The shift and the, the demand that was on teachers, on students, on families. You know, we, we definitely need to take all of that into consideration. If we're planning for potentially an entire year um, under a, a different kind of model, we need to be sure that whatever we're doing is sustainable for, for everybody involved.
Thank you. Any other questions before, for Dr. Burnham before we move on? Okay. So moving on to new business, um, these are action items, so they will require action from us as a committee. Um, the first is permanently removing the hiring freeze. So I'll let Mr. Ca- Mr. Cassidy can speak to that.
Good evening, everyone. This is Mike Cassidy and I'm the business manager. Uh, first of all, I want to thank, uh, well, I, I want to congratulate our, our new committee members and I want to congratulate uh, the other members on their new roles on community. So I look forward to working with, with everyone over the next year. So uh, what we have in front of you tonight for your consideration is a resubmitted uh, recommendation from the superintendent's office. And um, I, I think if, if you recall at the last meeting, um, it was intended that uh, the hiring freeze was to be lifted by the school committee. I think it was, uh, it was listed on the agenda as a temporary lift of the hiring freeze. And I think at one point when we were developing the agenda, we were gonna separate the temporary free, uh, temporary lift and then request a permanent lift. And I, I think that as we were developing the, the agenda, I, I think there was just a lack, a miscommunication there. So I, I, for, in, in an effort of transparency to the, uh, to the committee and to the community, I'm presenting the removal of the hiring freeze again to the committee tonight. And just very briefly, you know, I, I spoke about this at the last meeting. But on April 1st, the school committee uh, voted on the recommendations uh, of the superintendent, which was to create a hiring freeze on any position in the Lunenburg Public Schools. So as positions became available, either through retirement or resignations, uh, the superintendent would have to present uh, uh, the position to the school committee and remu- uh, and lift the freeze. Now, part of that process was an evaluation of the position. Um, and, and really it was, it was focused around the uncertainty of uh, of the pandemic impact on the local budget. And um, so we, we, we evaluated each position. The school committee authorized the posting of certain positions. Now that these uh, school department budget was, uh, was voted on on June 13th, we are requesting that the school committee remove the, the hiring freeze in the event that there is a retirement or resignation. And then uh, over the summer, we want to post these positions as soon as possible. Uh, I want to emphasize, and I think I emphasized this at the last meeting, any new positions that we would be presenting, or any new positioning, positions that we would want to add to the budget, we would bring that position still to the school committee and justify where we're gonna get the money to fund it. So these are, any, we're lifting the freeze on any budgeted positions that were approved on the Ju- on June 13th budget. So that is for your consideration again. Once again, I apologize, there was no effort to uh, mislead this committee or the, or the community on what we were trying to do. Um, so I apologize for that. And uh, I would, I would want the committee to consider this, this recommendation tonight again. And if you have any questions, let me know.
Does anyone on the committee have any questions for Mr. Cassidy? Have there been, have, have, Mr. Cassidy, um, have there been any additional retirements since our last meeting? Or any other?
I think I can announce, uh, I got an uh, uh, retirement announcement today um, from a teacher. And uh, um, Vicki, um, Abia from, from the primary school announced her retirement. She'll, she'll appear on the next personnel report. Uh, that retirement is scheduled in November, so it's not the start of the school year. So uh, what, you know, I, we haven't talked about a strategy on that position. Um, you know, ordinarily, a November retirement, um, we would uh, hire a new teacher mid-year. So sometimes there's a strategy, if, if there's a teacher that retires in September, sometimes you double budget, you hire a teacher for the start of the school year. And then you, you just find another spot for the retiree or that retiree mentors the, the new teacher. I think, uh, well, for a couple of reasons, I, I would, uh, and the superintendent and I will make a recommend- recommendation to the school committee on this. But uh, that's, that's pretty deep into the, the school year. That, that's almost the first quarter is, is almost done by the time she retires. Secondly, I don't, you know, the budget is very, very tight next year in budgeting. Uh, you know, two people, you know, um, for an extra 45 days. I, I don't know if um, we can handle that in the budget. Uh, once again, I've expressed my conservative nature on some of the uncertainties on the budget. So I probably gave you too long of an answer. Uh, but for that, but uh, but one thing leads it to another. You can see how um, you know, a retire, you know, and the, the these are the things that uh, we, you know, the, the committee needs to be aware of. And uh, uh, that was not budgeted. So getting back to the hiring freeze, if, if we had, if we make a decision to post her position and fund her for, say, 45 days and then hire a new teacher for the 180 plus days, uh, we would come back to the committee and say, this is where we're gonna find the money to, to, to do this. Uh, we want you to be aware of it. So right now, that, that's not a, that's not for consideration. Uh, it's that resignation or that retirement, at least to me, is a couple hours old. Um, so I, I can't make a recommendation on that. But we do have an additional retire- uh, retirement. So if you see her, make sure you wish her well and um, happy summer and happy retirement too. So that's all we have at this point. That's no new resignations either.
That was my next question, you beat me to it, so. Um, no, and, and I wanted to give that in the context of not having the hiring freeze in place, when you have those things come up as they do in the moment, that having that ability to begin to move, particularly in the summertime, when time is of the essence, is key.
Exactly. That's um, from time to time, uh, in my time in this, during my tenure in this district, we, we do get uh, uh, some movement. Uh, maybe someone is, uh, takes a promotional opportunity in another district if someone just resigns. Uh, we want to move as quickly as possible in those positions. Um, I don't know what the, you know, jobs in other districts are few and far between at this point. We're getting a very rich applicant pool for our positions. So that, that is, that is, um, that's just the sign of the times. So, um, so we're gonna get some good quality app, uh, hires from the positions that we are posting. So um, I'm pleased about that.
Anybody have any other questions for Mr. Cassidy? All right, if not, then I will take a motion to um, to approve permanently removing the hiring freeze.
This is Brian Leighton. I'll make a, I'll make a motion to permanently remove the hiring freeze.
Is there a second? Carol?
All right, Carol Ashambo, I'll second.
And a roll call vote, Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yeah.
Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bertrand?
Yes. Excellent. Um, so next action item for us is the FY 20 purchase orders and carry over to FY 21. So I don't know, Mr. Cassidy, can you speak to that? I don't know if Superintendent Burnham was going to.
No, I, I'm prepared.
Okay.
Dr. Burnham, are you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So um, let's just take a step back on what you're voting on. So um, the, the way that municipalities do, do work or business in, in districts is that we encumber money into POs for certain supplies or services. And uh, sometimes those supplies and service, well, sometimes those supplies are not received uh, in time at, at the end of the school, uh, at the end of the fiscal year. So today is June 30th, it's the last day of the fiscal year. There is a number of uh, supplies that we have not even, even though we've encumbered the money for those supplies. And then there's a number of services which we have received and we haven't received invoices yet. So basically what, uh, in this, this is an annual um, uh, practice or protocol, which is the school committee is presented a list of open, we call them open POs or of, of, of money that is still encumbered for sup- uh, for supplies that have not been received and services that we have not been invoiced for yet. And uh, this money uh, remains, you're, you're authorizing Town Hall to keep this money open until we receive those supplies and until we receive those invoices. So um, you know, this year is, is extraordinarily high for a couple reasons. So um, and I, it, it just seems like it's been a long three months. But uh, uh, three months ago, uh, we did put in a freeze on any new purchases. And it, and at one point when we knew school was closed permanently um, through, through the end of the year, is that we opened up the uh, uh, the, uh, the, the purchasing again. So there were a lot of purchase orders, especially through our, our facilities and grounds program. Uh, that, a lot of POs were open in April and May to get some, some uh, services and supplies for the start of the school year. So there is a large number of uh, facility and grounds POs. Also on this list is our PPE uh, supplies uh, following the protocol that was uh, designated by DUSI. So we do have an order in now, so we can get those supplies for the start of the school year. Uh, their D-bus and vanpool POs are still, uh, still open in those uh, to go through the board. Uh, Ms. Delanda has a, a grant, a $50,000 grant. That money is extraordinarily, uh, or extraordinary purchase orders that you wouldn't see on a year to year basis. That is what's driving the amount up significantly. So all I can say is for certain, our, our new members, uh, in, this is, this is a standard practice of business. Uh, it's my understanding that the Board of Selectmen will do the same for any open at, uh, at the town level. Um, and for, uh, just generally speaking, it, it is a larger amount. I, I can't imagine that this is, you know, this is gonna happen again next year. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you. Otherwise, you'd be voting um, to approve this list moving forward. And uh, and then there is, there's a file in our shared folder that you would have to sign so I can get it up to Town Hall for next Tuesday. So if you have any questions, please let me know.
No questions?
No.
All right, then.
Ready for roll call? Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yeah.
Mrs. Ashambo?
Did you make a motion? Did somebody make?
No, that wasn't a motion.
That's
I just don't want to have to come back afterwards and revote it because there was no more. So I'll make a motion to um, approve the year end incumbences as presented by Mr. Cassidy.
So is there a second? Laura?
Laura, Kelly, and I second that motion.
No.
Now.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yeah.
Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bertrand?
I am going to recuse myself.
So an abstain or?
Abst- abstain.
Okay.
Thank you. And I, I'll just remind the committee that the, the form is in the shared folder. If you could go in and sign it somehow, some way, I would appreciate it. Thank you again.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Cassidy. So um, now we're going to move on. Our next item, we will be looking at our FY 2021 calendar, um, calendar, meeting calendar. So this is where we'll just be taking a look here to see if we can get our meetings scheduled.
So from September through June, um, we have been able to schedule in accordance with our typical first and third Wednesday of the month, with the exception of February 24th being an off-cycle meeting, and that's due to the school vacation week in February. Normally, our meeting would have fallen on that, that week that is vacation. So this bumps that uh, meeting date out another week. Same situation for the uh, April 28th recommended date. Um, and as typical, we include the annual town meeting and the town election on, on the meeting calendar, so everybody's fully aware of um, those dates. I think, you know, what we need to give some consideration to is um, meetings over the next couple of months. Um, last year, we didn't have any meetings in July and um, you know, it still worked out okay that folks that folks were able to sign warrants, um, so that, you know, business could be, um, moved forward. Um, given that we're signing warrants electronically, um, you know, we'll continue to do that through the summer months. Um, so then it really comes down to, um, when do we want to meet? Now, we've already mentioned earlier in this meeting that typically, once we have a new committee, we schedule a workshop with Dorothy Presser. And, um, the workshop is Governance, Team, Self-Assessment, Roles and Responsibilities.
Do we want to take that, that item, which was under our old business, the summer meeting dates? Do we want to move that up to discuss everything together?
That makes sense.
Okay. I'll take a motion, I'll take a motion then to, um, to move Action Item 10A up for discussion now.
I can move to, um, this is Carol Ashambo. I'd like to make a motion to move 10A summer meeting dates so it can be discussed with our 2021 School Committee Calendar.
And a second, Brian?
Brian Leighton, I second.
Roll call vote? Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yeah.
Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bertrand?
Yes. So our summer meeting dates.
So I, for consideration, right, I think, I think there's a, um, an agreement around holding a workshop meeting, um, to orient the new members and yourself as a whole new committee, um, with a workshop by Dorothy Presser. Um, something else I think that we can consider, and we don't have to set a date for this now, um, is a workshop on superintendent evaluation.
I think I would like to see a workshop on superintendent evaluation. So we're all more familiar with how to go about doing that.
I agree.
Is that something that Dorothy would do with us also?
Yes. I'd like her to find availability this summer. And she's open, uh, the month of August, anytime after August 6th.
Then do we want to try and get her in for our second meeting in August? If we keep it on, if we kept the, the on-cycle time?
So you're suggesting two meetings in August?
Do we need another one in July is the question? Or do we, or do we do it, do you think it would benefit us more to do one more in July? Skip an early August one? And it seems like to me, though, we're probably going to have more information available in August to us. So maybe it makes most sense to do our first one in Au- you know, the, one more in August and then maybe have her, I, I don't know. Maybe there will be too much going on right before school starts to do a workshop and, you know, with our other, with our regular meeting? Brian?
This is Brian Leighton. I, I would agree. I think it's, it might make sense just to have one workshop and then one regular meeting or possibly two workshops and a regular meeting. But I really want to make sure we get that regular meeting in and we can update the community.
Yeah. Does anyone have any known con- Carol, sorry?
I, I just wanted to say with all, everything going on this summer, I really agree with Brian. We need to make sure that, you know, we are able to meet so that we can talk about what's going on with reopening and, and have that out in the open with the community. I, I just wanted to make, that I agree with Brian.
So did we want to look at an additional night then? For the workshop, so that's a standalone. Dr. Burnham, do you think that's, based on what we might be looking at in August, that's a better idea?
Yep, potentially. That, that can work. Um, I believe last year, the meeting that was the workshop meeting, there might have been one, one matter of business to be conducted and then we went right into a workshop.
Right.
Correct. I do remember that as well.
So if you were to stay on cycle in August, you're talking about Wednesday, August 5th? And Wednesday, August 19th? And if you're looking at, you know, a, a meeting in, in July, could be potentially Wednesday, the 29th. Although we don't have to limit ourselves to Wednesdays.
True.
Yeah, I'm flexible.
Fine. Well, if the state is going to give some, um, type of guidance regarding transportation, I, I would kind of like to meet after that so that we could talk about that.
So maybe it makes sense to wait and see when the guidance is released. And then once it's released, we schedule a meeting at that point to happen as soon as we can. Um, do that with a 48-hour posting notice.
That sounds good.
That makes sense to me.
Yeah, it does. And then keep our regular meetings in August?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And everyone, we were, I'm assuming we were good with the draft. And Superintendent Burnham, do we want the superintendent evaluation workshop? Should we try and schedule that or wait till Dorothy's here in August and then try to schedule that with her then?
So I, I feel that that workshop should happen in the summer if we can and very early in the year if we can't. Because the later that goes into the year, um, you know, we've lost, uh, opportunity to clearly outline things, identify things, come to agreement about the process. Um, those things haven't been in place the last two years. A year ago, I had the opportunity to meet with each member of the school committee one-on-one and share with them, um, you know, some artifacts, some explanation around artifacts. They had an opportunity to ask questions, um, and I was able to provide answers. And, and this year, you know, that didn't happen. I think, you know, something else to, to give some consideration to, um, other districts do things in different ways. And one of the ways in which they, they operate around superintendent evaluation is that there's a subcommittee assigned to do the work of, um, you know, soliciting the input from all of the members and then drafting the final document versus one person drafting the final document. But those are things that we can certainly have, you know, conversation around in a workshop meeting.
In a workshop.
But that, but it would still be separate from the other workshops that, that Dorothy's doing.
I think so because it's been, my, my sense, having done this workshop now two years in a row, this would be the third time, third time for you too, Wendy. Um, third time for you, Carol, as well?
Yep.
I think so.
Yep. So, um, I think that that, in my experience, the last two years, that really is a full meeting all on its own. Yes.
So do we want to try and, if Dorothy said she's open completely after August 6th, then do we want to try and get those two workshop dates then, right here, right now?
Um, what I can do if you, if you like, I can, I can send out a doodle poll to determine when everybody would be available, um, to attend a meeting that would be a workshop. Um, so, you know, we could schedule one of the workshops during the second meeting in August. And then we can schedule a separate meeting some other time in August, not on our typical schedule, to have the other workshop. But I can send out a, a doodle poll to figure out folks' availability in August. Does that work?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. So then with that, as Dr. Burnham outlined, one, one of those meetings being on our regular August meeting, so the 5th and the 19th. We're scheduling in the moment the Jul- the July meeting and then the draft that was sent around for the FY 21 school year. I'll take a motion for all three of those components being our school committee calendar for, for FY, uh, for, for 2021. Brian?
This is Brian Leighton. I'll make a motion to approve the drafted 2021 school calendar, school committee calendar, uh, including the two August dates and a July date.
A second?
Um, Carol Ashambo, I can second that.
Any discussion? Ready for a roll call vote?
Yeah.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yeah.
Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bertrand?
Yes.
So I'll make, um, the edits and add the August dates. Um, and also secure another workshop date and add that to, um, add that to the calendar and get you a finalized draft.
Excellent. Great. Thank you. Moving on to old business, um, no, we're still in new business, my apologies. Um, we are approving the salary schedule for unaffiliated staff.
Now it'd be Mr. Cassidy to explain.
Mr. Cassidy, yes.
Hi, this is Mike Cassidy. And, uh, for your consideration, again, tonight is a, uh, is another, uh, uh, adjustment to salary schedule. So, uh, there is some uncertainty around, uh, what the budget, uh, looks like next year. Uh, the positions that are in the unaffiliated contract are primarily centered around our extended day program, our cafeteria monitors, our greenhouse assistants, and our Coda. So, um, next year, and when I say next year, I mean as of July 1st to June 30th, I am recommending, uh, at this point, uh, no increases for our staff, our permanent staff, uh, u- under the affiliated contract. However, um, a- a- as it is going to be the case over the next several years, the minimum wage is increasing. So, um, many of our, um, junior aid positions, uh, are, are, are entry-level positions and I'm recommending that they, they, they follow that minimum wage. As we, as we change the minimum wage on January 1st, it's going to affect our senior aides because our, they are, tend to be older and have a little bit more experience with some of our, uh, uh, student population. So we pay them a little bit higher. I'm also recommending, uh, adjustments to the cafeteria monitor and the greenhouse assistant, uh, on the salary schedule. Currently, we are not funding any cafeteria monitors. Uh, and we do not have, uh, the greenhouse assistant position in the, in any budget. We, we don't have, uh, any plans of hiring for that. Uh, just going back to the cafeteria monitors, ordinarily, they, they, uh, are not long-term employees and they are really groomed to become cafeteria, uh, workers at a much higher rate. So, um, keeping it to three years, uh, and they'll, they'll get the, the colas as, as we move forward. Um, so I'm recommending cutting those positions down as far as step increases every single year. So I just want to be clear, and I don't think I, I should have started out this way. On January 4th, excuse me, July 1st, or when, uh, our employees come back at the beginning of this, the, uh, school year, there are no proposed increases for any staff members. That's, uh, any of our junior aides, senior aides, directors and coordinators for our extended day program. On January 1st, there were, right now, there are no increases for our director, coordinator, uh, in some of our long-term, uh, senior aide positions. However, on January 1st, with the new minimum wage, our junior aides, the junior aides are going up to the minimum wage, which is going to affect the first three steps for our senior aide positions. If you look at the chart that I sent you, you can see the, uh, it's highlighted in yellow what positions are being adjusted on January 1st. That is what I'm proposing to the committee right now. Uh, if conditions change, uh, and, uh, we can look at some of our potential revenue sources for our extended day program and we can afford a slight adjustment to our director and coordinator and even some of our senior, uh, senior aide positions, we will move forward a, a recommendation in the fall for Ju- uh, for January 1st for those positions. At this point, I can't make, I'm not recommending those positions, not knowing what the extended day program looks like and not knowing what the revenue stream is going to look like, uh, to fund those positions. So, uh, if you have any questions, uh, this is a short, this is a short-term plan for the, the small group of employees. Uh, I'll be happy to, I'll be happy to take those, uh, those questions. Otherwise, uh, just moving forward, I want to recommend that making a motion to, uh, approve these is needed.
Any questions or for Mr. Cassidy? No questions? All right. Then we, if someone would like to make a motion? Brian?
I'll make a motion to approve the salary schedule for unaffiliated staff as presented.
Second?
Carol? Carol Ashambo, I will second that.
Ready for a roll call vote? Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yeah.
And Mrs. Bertrand?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. And I just want to remind you that there is a file in the shared folder, uh, for your signature. Um, I'm not sure, I think it's, I think it's a Word document. If you could just, uh, type your name, it will sign your name. That would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cassidy. Moving on, we are up to public comment, which can be regarding anything that the school committee governs. I am not.
Mr. Passios?
Yes, you see. Mr. Passios?
Yep, just clicking to turn everything on that I've kept off through the meeting. Uh, Dave Passios, 56 Whiting Street, speaking as a citizen of. Dave Passios, 56 Whiting Street, speaking as a citizen of Lunenburg and a taxpayer. Come before this board a number of times over the years on this subject. As you move into executive session this evening, I ask that you remember that the town infused $1 million into the salaries of the teachers over the past three years. That's $1 million that did not buy us a single position. I'm not saying they didn't deserve it, but I think there's been a lot of comment that was rather excessive, even three years ago when it was agreed to. Under the circumstances we find ourselves now, we have even more pressures to rein in those escalating costs for salaries. I came before, I believe you, or maybe it was a joint meeting, I really don't remember Board of Selectmen and School Committee after attending conference in Boston in January, and a discussion that I had with an administrator from another town in the state suggested that one of the ways to go about the restructuring of a collective bargaining agreement for teachers was to support the lower steps of the contract. This helping to attract newer ideas, new teachers coming into, looking for jobs, and, you know, being able to afford to take those positions, and conversely, to help offset that cost. The proposal, in this case, was to knock three steps off the top. And if you remember, the last contract added a number of steps on the top end of the, of a contract. So, and the one thing to remember is that in that scenario, any teachers already in those upper steps were grandfathered until they either resigned or retired from the system. So, I just leave you with that going into your executive session, and know that you've got some tough negotiations ahead, and remind you that 5%, 6%, 7% increases annually with the school budget. Although, we've discussed this a lot over the past year, especially trying to be transparent with the Finance Committee hearings and get this all out in the open. It's still not sustainable to have a 30% increase in the school budget over five or six years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Passios. Do we have any other public comment?
Not seeing any, but I'd like to offer a comment, if I might.
Yes, please.
So, I would like to congratulate the new committee, newly formed today, for a successful first meeting. You've got one under your belt. Well done. And I'd like to wish everyone, and everyone viewing at home, a happy and safe 4th of July.
Thank you. Before we wrap our meeting reports, bincom would be it.
Okay, well, the Finance Committee met on June 25th. They are looking for two new members, and you had stated earlier that perhaps they have them. That would be wonderful. There was also a great deal of discussion about the Debt Review Committee, which will be very important as we move forward. They're looking at current policies and our future debt needs. And as you mentioned, it was mentioned at that meeting that the school committee needs to appoint a member to the Appointment Committee. I'm happy to do that. And their next meeting is the 9th of July.
Thank you. Well, then, we will be moving to executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with union personnel, not to return to public meeting.
Roll call vote? Mrs. Kelly? Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bertrand?
Yes. Meeting adjourned, 8:24 is our meeting adjournment time.